Tuesday, September 8th at 7:30. We are finally back in the City Hall Council chambers. And I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with roll call.
Stunek.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
All right, W. Erickson.
Here.
T. Erickson.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
Lambert.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
And Bado.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and then I guess we have the whole council here. We have Jan is on the monitors, but we're all here. When you're recognized to speak, you can pull your mask down so you can speak clearly. And please do speak clearly into the microphone in front of you so the recording works and the WebEx works and all that. And if you're having trouble hearing us, anybody on WebEx, raise a hand and let us know. But that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Bevins moves to approve. Wayne Erickson seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call because Jan is on TV, so we do roll call votes for all of our votes still.
I'm sorry.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W. Erickson.
Yes.
T. Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to item number five, the consent calendar. Notice to public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will all be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call.
Move to adopt, Bevins.
Second.
Pritchett. Motion by Bevins, second by Pritchett to adopt the consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W. Erickson.
Yes.
T. Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to item number six on the agenda, presentations. Six A is the splash pad presentation. Who is taking this to start? Just go straight to Emily?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Emily. Take it away.
Hi. Thank you guys for having us in this new way of communicating. We definitely haven't seen you guys in a while. It's been about five years, if I can remember right. So basically, we're just here to kind of give you an update on the Brainerd Splash Pad and what we've been doing or how we've been doing it. So I guess, well, you want to get us to start? So we've raised $85,000 in this past weekend. We did a Labor Day big push and we got $3,000, pretty darn close to $3,000 just over the weekend in donations. And we figured out some numbers that people had been asking about with our donors and stuff like that. And we just want to come before the council and give you some numbers and then ask you to maybe do a match for us as far as monies go. We've got some numbers for you right now. So within the last, I guess, the first year was kind of all the jumping through the paperwork, you know, getting our fiscal agent, which we did start out with the initiative foundation, but over time, we did switch over to Brainerd Community Action as that was more local and better fit for us, I believe, at the time. So in the last four years, we've got over 100 families and businesses that have donated to the Brainerd Splash Pad, making up our $85,000. And how we have sold those is in partnership levels. Our selling point was kind of put your name on it, be part of the chain. So our levels were as follows, like $250 for a brick, a stepping stone was $1,000. We sold a few memorial benches as well as a few picnic tables. Those in total are about four and four. And then kind of bigger donors are, we're talking about doing a plaque on an arch. So what we've kind of looked at as far as pricing for donor promises or what have you is anywhere between $7,000 and $8,000. Now, that doesn't include, you know, the installation of it, which is still kind of being worked out with Parks Recreation as far as, you know, the bidding with WSB and who's actually going to do the pad. So eight grand, $8,000 of the money that we've raised so far would actually be for the items. Right. That need to be placed in the park. Right. And then the rest is all available to build the splash pad. Right, going towards the splash pad. So in the beginning, you know, our goal was about $350,000. When we first started, you know, Meta and I were like, we're going to blow it out with the water, do $500,000 and make this great big splash pad essentially. But over the years, as we've kind of looked at some of the others within our community... Can you guys still hear us?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. We're kind of, we're bringing it down a little bit and we're hoping, you know, somewhere in the range of 180 to 200,000 for the park essentially within Memorial or our set donation or destination of Gregory, which again, it's, we're totally flexible and just really want to get this for the community. Meta and I worked really hard over the last five years. People are ready. People are ready to make splash and have some free affordable fund for families. So we just really are hoping that the council can kind of help roll that ball into that last step. Do you guys have any questions for us? Or again, this is kind of weird not standing in front of everybody, so I apologize, it's awkward.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Jan.
I do, so what do you think the total cost is going to be?
As of right now, we're kind of just trying to see what the best bid is going to be. When we look at a comparable space, we're looking at the Deerwood Splash Pad, which I believe they roughly did theirs for around $140,000. The Deerwood community is a little bit smaller than the Brainerd Lakes area. And the best thing about the splash pads is they're really adaptable. So I mean, at this point, I think our budget would be about 185, with your guys' help, of course, but we can always add to it later. I mean, that's the really great thing about it is if we can't fit it all in one year, Meta and I are just committed to making it happen and we're going to continue to fundraise all the way until we hear those kids laughing and playing in there. So they're adaptable.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question then.
I've had it, Jan.
Do we have a mockup plan of what this is going to look like? And have you decided? I heard that it's going to possibly be in the form versus Gregory. I mean, has, is that still up there or what?
Yeah, so we do have some designs in play. We're working with Stacy Stran, a flagship aquatics. He's kind of been with us since the beginning. In the first, you know, plan that we'd had, like I said, it was roughly around $385,000 at that point. But I mean, he just kind of made a promise that we can take out this and that and, you know, stay with whatever guidelines we're going to have to make our green space beautiful wherever it may be. In the Memorial Park plan, they had it, the splash pad spot marked out as far as like size and everything like that. It would just be the fixtures which are, anything can be put on it at any time, once the pad is in place.
Any other questions?
It seems like I'm talking to Jan, but I have a, I have a question for you too. And that's that we've just designated millions of dollars to the upgrading of Memorial Park. Have you made any presentations and coordinated at all with the park board for some of that funding since they're in charge of their own budgeting?
Yes, absolutely we have. We actually, one week ago today, we had met with the parks board and kind of let them know where we were with fundraising. And I know they kind of have their own agenda of what needs to get moved and put over there. I think one of the biggest problems that we're facing honestly in these unprecedented times is a lot of the equipment, the prices are going up. So that's another thing that's really affected our goal as far as the size and things like that with playground equipment, splash pads. The pricing is going up, which is why we're just kind of trying to mold into the Memorial Park area. And yet, we have been correlating with them. We were just advised to just kind of give you guys an update and one last shot and maybe just ask for one last push from the actual city as Parks and Rec is willing to maintain the pad for us year after year. And give us the green space. Yes.
To kind of double down on Kelly's question, can we mute or unmute Kara and Kevin? Because we have the president and vice president of the park board with us. Kara, you've had a couple of conversations with the splash pad fundraisers, but to answer Kelly's question, of the $1.3 million for Memorial Park, how much is the park board putting in towards a splash pad?
All right, thanks for having us. Again, kind of awkward here with all the freezing going on, but so yes, our initial quote, our initial plans at Memorial Park included the splash pad because we thought it would be a great addition to our new park. The numbers that have come back, our tentative, our initial plans, the numbers that came back, the quote is very high. And with us needing to move the, you know, what we need to move from the other park over, we don't have the budget this fall to put the splash pad in there, which is why we are holding off and requoting this January or early spring. So that's kind of where we're at. Kevin, do you have anything to add to that?
I think I do have just a couple of quick things to add to that. Kara summarized very well here. I would say that the Memorial Park project, we have looked at a lot of different components going into there. Our first objective, of course, was the warming house and the rinks that we were, that we are losing from the Mill Avenue Park and moving over there. What we have found is through our preliminary bidding and preliminary documentation that that is not only eating up our entire 1.3 budget, but actually looks like that we are about $250,000 of eating, of even meeting just that at this point. With our entire project sitting at a number that's hanging rough, proposed preliminarily, looks like about 1.7 to 1.85. But what I can say is that although Kara and I are just two members of the board, we don't speak for the board entirely, I believe that the splash pad is something that we are committed to helping be born. We would like to play off of the energy that our community members have brought forth. And I believe that we have a group of people that are committed to make this happen, if not this year, in the next few years to come. It is a part of our planning. We are putting the underground work now in the Phase One work for it and we have it in our plans. So I think we've got a team of people who are willing to make this happen. We would just like to ask for as much help as we can get from both the splash pad folks who've done a great job and obviously been very committed to this. We would like to help them and we'd like to ask the city to help. We would like to ask everybody to help that is willing to pitch in and with that, I think we can make this happen.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Kevin. I have a kind of a follow-up. So right now, your preliminary estimates are the $1.3 million is only getting us the two hockey rinks and the warming house essentially, and you're going to need more for that. So while you want a splash pad as part of the Memorial Park project, there's no money in the $1.3 million we had in your budget this year.
That is correct. What we were doing for the underground, I don't know that we, we don't know the totals of what that actual number is because there's a lot of crossover of work on this, in the scope of work. For instance, when you have an earth mover there and you're moving dirt to prepare the pad for the splash pad, but they're also moving dirt for everything else, it's hard to identify the exact amount of, or the exact monetary value of what is going specifically to that splash pad because of the crossover of scope of work. But we know that we are irregardless in Phase One. We are committed to putting in the underground utilities, preparing the space for it and setting aside lighting and electrical and having all of those components basically ready to go once the splash pad's ready to rip.
Thank you. So back to Emily, your ask of the council is to match what you have fundraised to this far, $88,000 or something?
That is correct. So tonight, we actually are just here to let you know Meta and I are going to continue to roll the ball as far as we can and as fast as we can to make this happen, not only just to help, you know, the parks board, but to help our city as a whole because people want this, they really do. And, you know, we need you to help us, to help the kids, to help the parents get a little sanity and get some sunshine and so people don't have to travel to other communities. Let's keep it local. And being, with that said, you know, where we're at right now, we're going to continue going. So yes, we would like the city to help pick in, if they can, an extra up to $100,000 because Meta and I know that we can get there. We've been going this long and we're continuing going. And if we can make $3,000 in a weekend, give us a little bit more time and let's just do a match if you guys can.
So the ask is a match of up to $100,000 earmarked?
It is.
For a splash pad?
Mr. Chair, I have another question. This is Lambert.
I've had it, Jan.
I guess I'm looking at this, this is not something that's going to be done within the next year or two. Is that correct, Kevin or Kara with that? Would you see, it's not something we're going to be seeing in '21 or probably maybe we can see it in '22. So the urgency right now to not have that money right up front.
Let's have Kevin answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Here's what we're looking at, guys. We are looking at completing the plan work for our Memorial Park project basically right now. The plans are very close to done for that project and nearing the portion of work we would be able to go out and take bids on this. Our intent is to receive the bids during the winter season, which is when we feel like we will get the biggest bang for the taxpayers' buck with this project in the hopes of starting actual construction in Memorial Park in the spring of next year. Now, exactly what that scope of work is, is yet to be identified. We have broken out the project into seven sections or different parts of the total project. Section one is, or the base bid is by far the largest portion. It makes up about 1.5 million of a total of $1.8 million project. So unbelievably, the first portion actually makes up almost the entire project while the remaining six portions take up a fairly small chunk. But I think the scope of work is yet to be identified, what will happen next year based upon the bids we receive, the feedback we get from you guys tonight regarding this splash pad. But I think this could absolutely be thrown into construction next year.
Does that answer your question, Jan?
Well, yes, but when is your completion date are you looking? When do you think that would upgrade to use? Are you thinking?
I think Kevin said it would be completed next year if we matched the $100,000.
Completely completed by the, by the, completely completed, okay.
2021 construction here.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
I have, I have one. Does anybody know what upkeep on a splash pad costs approximately?
Yes, I can speak to that. What I can also just give you is a little bit of background is I think I know every single thing there is to know about a splash pad. I have visited five splash pads throughout the state throughout this summer. I've spoken to all of the people who are either on the city work side or on the money-raising side of all of those splash pads. And I've also spoken to pretty much everybody of all five of those splash pads who's on the maintenance side. And what I can tell you is, is that there are effectively two systems of splash pads that are currently being built. One is what is referred to as a pump and dump system, which is where we use the city fresh water and we cycle it through the splash pad when it's being used. And it effectively goes into one of two places, either into the sewer, sanitary sewer or the non-sanitary sewer. And the other version is a treated system where we would effectively reuse, repump our own water, which uses either chlorine or other sanitizing systems to reuse those. And what I can tell you is, is that the chlorine systems are fairly expensive, not only from the equipment side, but also we have to have staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week who know how to test these levels. And depending upon the system, that needs to be done every 12 to 24 hours for life. So we are thinking that a pump and dump system is the way to go. That is what most all other municipalities use. And the upkeep on those systems is actually quite affordable. The equipment averages about a 30-year lifespan, depending upon what, you know, the types that you put in there before any maintenance needs to be done, assuming that the winter care or the seasonal care is done. And besides that, you have very, very similar maintenance cost to what you would have on playground equipment. So it's actually, these actually are pretty simple systems. You push a button, turns on the pumps, the pumps run for a little while until you time them out and then it shuts back off and doesn't come back on until somebody else does it or pushes the button. So they're really quite simple systems and I believe that's why we're seeing a lot of municipalities putting these in. They're inexpensive to run and they are a huge fan favorite. So independent of the splash pad people, I think the parks would be looking at these irregardless, so, or should be, based on my findings. So that's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so are there any more questions? If there aren't, I suppose we could go one of two things, make a motion to match the money or not, or make a motion to have Connie included in the budget presentation for the budget workshop next week.
My comment would be to discuss it next week at our budget workshop.
I would accept that. Lambert.
Okay, we'll make that a motion in a second to have Connie include this as a discussion item at the council budget workshop on Monday. Any discussion? I'll just say I support the match and the preliminary budget stuff I went over with Connie, if it hasn't changed in four days, it looks like this $100,000 might be affordable with, without even a tax increase. So I'm optimistic, Connie.
No pressure at all.
But any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to discuss this at our budget workshop next week and we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W. Erickson.
Yes.
T. Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you, Kara and Kevin and Emily and Meta. That brings us to six B, the 2019 Airport Annual Report. Stephen Wright.
Mr. President and Council, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. And then I did have a presentation prepared. Can you see that on the screen?
There it is.
Excellent. There we go. And Sean, I'm going to have to give you the cue of the next slide. So once again, this is Brainerd and it's the annual report for 2019. Sorry, it's already September of 2020. We've had some interesting events since the year. So I'll just briefly outline 2019 and then answer any questions you may have of me. So go ahead and head to the next slide. Just wanted to remind you of kind of some of the strategic highlights of the airport. We have two runways over 6,500 feet long, redundant precision instrument approaches, modern passenger terminal building built in 2012, planning to service very well into the future, as well as we're the first year into our new general aviation arrival/departure facility, providing the 24-hour general aviation access, fitting very well into our airport program. We have hangar areas for commercial development as well as T-hangers, smaller individual unit hangers for private and recreational purposes. And we do have some areas available for future growth, which I will describe later on in the presentation. Next slide, please. Just a reminder, we have daily airline flights and even through this pandemic response, Sky Airlines through Delta Connection has maintained its domestic route schedule, connecting over 200 destinations. Obviously, the international flights have suffered through this last summer. Next slide. Through 2019, we are able to maintain monthly charter service offered through the Riverside Resort Hotel and Casino on Sun Country Airlines to Laughlin, Nevada. Next slide. These are our airline, our business and community partners that established the airport as their base. So Delta Sky, Delta Sky West Airlines, our main anchor tenant for the general aviation side is Northboard Aviation. We have Brainerd Helicopter Service, two car rental companies, Nashville and Hertz over 2019. We have our air care companies, North Memorial Lifeline Three, AW Research Laboratories, some of the governmental agencies out there is the Minnesota State Patrol, Transportation Security Administration, Civil Air Patrol, as well as DNR, Fish and Wildlife and Forestry. And then we are always grateful to have our Wings Airport Cafe. Next slide, please. So just want to highlight financial highlights for 2019. We are supported by airport users annually as well as contributions of the city of Brainerd and Prowin County. The city of Brainerd also contributes to the financial oversight of the airport while Prowin County contributes to routine legal services to the airport. Comprehensive reporting of the airport is included in the city's annual financial report. Next slide, please. Just highlight 2019 annual budget. We have about a $1.1 million operating budget. And you can see the percentage of airport revenue on the left side as well as airport expenses on the right side. I'll let you take a glance at that slide. And let's go ahead to the next slide. In 2019, the state of Minnesota performed an economic impact analysis of the entire airport system. And then they provided the Brainerd Airport a specific economic report specifically to the airport. So these are some of the highlights that came out of that study for the airport. Now, the airport contributes about 14,220 visitors coming into our area, providing an employment of 275 with a payroll of $12.2 million, spending of $18.8 million, with a total economic activity of $31 million into the, into the community. And then state and local tax revenues of $1.3 million. If you go to the next slide, unfortunately, it's a JPEG, so it may be a little skewed. But these, these reports are available on the Minnesota Department of Transportation Office of Aeronautics website. So that's where you find all of the facts and the figures as well as the background information of that economic impact statement of the airport. So let's go to the next slide after that with operating highlight. The next few slides are just going to be kind of my annual charts that I maintain for the airport with airline employments, monthly fuel flowage, and then our annual fuel flowage. So next slide, that is our airline employment slide. The top, the top dash line is the number of seats that are available out of Brainerd on the airline system. As you can see, every year, we are getting closer and closer to that dash line. 2019 was another record-breaking year for passenger employments on the airline system. So the Brainerd airline market has been doing very, very well. Next slide. So this is our monthly fuel flowage, just to show you the break in the types of aircraft. The top line is our general aviation, more of the corporate aircraft fuel use. It's the Jet A use. The next line, kind of the bluish gray line, is the, generally is the airline jet fuel sales. And then the yellowish line is our, kind of our recreational and private type aircraft So then the next slide, that is our fuel sales year over year. 2019 was a great year. This slide also has 2020 on it, so you can see kind of where 2020 is tracking as well. So that is the information for 2019 in a nutshell. I do want to take some time to describe- Uh, I do wanna take some time to describe some of the events of 2020. Uh, we've had an interesting uh turn of, turn of events where activities are down, obviously, as of March, uh and going into April and May. Uh, in April, uh the federal government through the CARES Act and through the Federal Aviation Administration announced a sizable grant of approximately eighteen million dollars uh to be used for uh whatever purposes we need at the airport. Uh, since then, they've ratcheted, uh, they've ratcheted some uh different rules and regulations uh through the Federal Aviation Administration system. And so uh that's been broken up into an initial grant of about three point eight million dollars that we can use for operating expenses over a four-year period of time. Then the remaining uh fourteen million dollars uh can be used for capital development. And so I do want to share with you, if you go to the next slide, uh that is a map of the capital development projects that uh your Airport Commission through various consultants and, and, and working with the Federal Aviation Administration and the uh, and the state of Minnesota, uh to come up with a list of, of projects that we can do to accelerate our airport's master plan. Uh, one of those items, we are going to be able to construct the Airport Rescue Firefighting Facility out to the intersection of the two runways. Uh, that will allow us to respond to airport incidents and, and accidents in a more efficient manner. And then uh we are able to do, uh in order to uh, to achieve the financial goals of the airport, and one of those goals is to reduce the tax levy investments of both city and the county. So we do wanna build some revenue generating facilities uh that are much needed are at the airport. And so uh off of, off our ramp area, you will see the two hangar facilities that will be constructed uh as well. That will allow us to, to facilitate business growth at the airport. Uh, one of those lines that you see is a sewer water line and utility extension along Highway two ten uh out to the intersection of that new Airport Rescue Firefighting Facility. Uh, so we are going to be able to have sewer and water extended uh for a lion's share of, of our road frontage along Ha- Highway two ten. If you go to the next slide then. That is a, a screenshot of our master plan. And one thing you see is that white gray, you'll see dark gray, what are called taxiways, and then you'll see a light gray taxiway going from our main ramp area out to our new Airport Rescue Firefighting Facility. That is a, a designed taxiway for uh airfield circulation. And uh with sewer and water going right through there, that's setting us up for twenty-five acres of, of aeronautical development space that we get to market and develop uh to grow not only the airport, but our regional wealth. We're very excited that, that this grant will be used to uh set us up uh for, for future growth. And with that, that is my last slide. Does the council have any questions with me for 2019 or anything else?
Any questions? You wanna build a splash pad?
Might not be able to build a splash pad, but I can bring visitors into the splash.
Seeing no other council questions. Stephen, thanks for coming tonight and giving us the update.
Not a problem. Thank you, council, for your support.
That brings us to item number seven, Council Committee Report. Seven A is Personnel and Finance Committee. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, we have six items on our agenda. The first one is the approval of bills and payment contractors. Um, and the movement, motion coming out of committee is to approve the payment of bills and to, and contractors, and I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert. Lambert.
Feeding the dogs.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, item number two is the ratification of hiring Street Maintenance One personnel. Um, as we know, we had some um of our street maintenance guys leave in our last meeting. We basically gave the approval for them to be replaced. There were fifty-six applicants and twenty interviews. Um, and they found three candidates that they would really like to have to be able to hire. So um the motion coming out of committee is to ratify the hiring of the following individuals, as Street Maintenance One employees. It would be Robert Anderson, uh step six, effective eight, three twenty. Uh, Michael Jensen, step four, uh which pays twenty-three seventy-nine an hour, uh effective nine, eight twenty, and Chad Lardy, step two, which is twenty-one seventy-three an hour, uh effective nine, fourteen twenty, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Ted Erickson to ratify the hiring. Any discussion?
Uh, just so you know, um, Robert Anderson was transferred over from Parks, and so Parks will be moving to fill his position. And that's part of the reason why he came in at the step that he did. Uh, Michael Jensen has basically about sixteen years, if you read the packet, of experience, which explains his step. And uh Chad Lundie was a ma- maintenance special, uh specialist at Crow Wing County and had ten years of experience. So pretty quality uh employees.
Yeah, it's a good applicant pool.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
Oh, item number three, I wish we could skip, but we can't. Uh, and that's the retirement of Police Chief Corky McQuiston. Motion coming out of committee is to set, accept with heavy regret, uh, the Police Chief Corky McQuiston's retirement and authorize his severance pay per city policy. Further to request, the Civil Service Commission begin the hiring process, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I mean, yeah, it's with regret. I think Corky has served the city and the community in, in exemplary ma- manner and will definitely miss him. And he's giving us plenty of notice so, which is very greatly appreciated by the city.
Yeah, I, I noted that, that he's sticking around almost all the way through November, and that's, that's generous. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
I don't wanna vote. But I will, yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, item number four is long-term disability insurance request for proposals result. And the motion coming out of committee is to accept the long-term disability proposal by Madison National Life Insurance Company at fifteen cents per one hundred dollars of monthly payroll for twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-three, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh, just so you know, this is something that's required every five years by state law, and there was a seventeen percent decrease. Okay, yeah, here.
Decrease.
Okay, in our rates, in the premiums, with a three-year rate guarantee, which will, you know, transfer into about a two thousand eight hundred dollar a year savings, which will be split between the city, BPU, and HRA.
Good news. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Kelly.
Did you, may I ask Mr. Pritchett, could you say a two thousand dollar savings?
Two thousand eight hundred dollars, which will be split between the three. If I said two thousand, I misspoke.
Which one did clarify?
We'll see twelve hundred of it, fourteen hundred?
Probably should be like fifteen or sixteen.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries.
All right, so that takes us to item number five, uh, which is the update on the twenty-twenty-one health insurance requests for proposal. Um, and so I'm going to let uh Ms. Schubert handle this one. Cause if there's any questions and they come to me, I'll just kinda look at you like, yeah, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And there is a motion coming out of this that we'll get to at the end.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. So earlier this year, the council retained North Risk Partners as a broker to assist us with our market review for our health insurance for twenty-twenty-one. We have received the most or the bulk of the proposals back. There were a couple of stragglers. They were still anticipating late last week. We believe that the consultant will have ready um a proposal for us or the results for us by September ninth. What we are proposing to do is follow what we did back in two thousand eight, which was the last time that the city went out on its own to get our insurance quotes. Usually, we follow the source well pool and just use what they do. So what we are recommending we do is that we ask our employee insurance committee to meet, to get the results from the consultant. So they, they are fully aware of what the options are and to help us make a recommendation to the city council as far as what our plans and what our options would be for twenty-twenty-one. We also liked what we did with COVID, where we asked a city council member to participate on that in, um, meetings with us, so that we get some questions from you or possible questions from your group at that time as well. Uh, during committee, they talked about that a little bit and uh council member Ted Erickson had volunteered to serve on that. And we are very appreciative of that. And so we're hoping that council will consider having him, first of all, that we can follow that process that we did similar to two thousand eight, and then have Mr. Erickson sit on, on those committee meetings as well.
And so the motion coming out of committee was to appoint uh council person Ted Erickson um as the council rep on the employee insurance committee, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Ted to the insurance committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries.
And we didn't have a second motion coming out of committee, cause this was information only. So I think they're just looking for guidance, so. Do you need anything else out of that? Well, okay.
Go, item number six.
All right. So item number six, the last one, is uh loan subordination. Um, and so the motion coming out of committee is to approve the subordination request from Ms. Wanda Lane at one-one oh seven Pine Street, and I so move.
And second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
It's just one of these, she's got um some twenty thousand dollar in grants and loans, and she's looking at refinancing. City was in second position, will still be second position, so it's a pretty good deal. It's a, it's a loan that basically comes out to have citizens improve their houses and stay in the houses, so they're not turning it over. So this looks pretty successful.
Go, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries.
End of report.
Thank you, Alderman Pritchett. Brings us to item letter B, Safety and Public Works Committee, who met at four-thirty this afternoon. Alderman Bevins.
Sorry, uh, it was quite a workout. We have four agenda items, but it'll make it seem like twenty by the time I'm done. Item number one is the event street closure application for the fire department open house. This is a open house to be held on October eighth, twenty-twenty, from five PM to seven PM. The motion is to accept staff's recommendation, approve the application, under the condition that the fire department obtain all state approvals for large events, and the event follows all guidelines provided by the governor's executive orders or other guidance obtained in the approval process. And that request for traffic control be made through the street department for street closure prior to the event, and I so move.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I take it this was the item that caused you to meet it for Thursday.
Yeah, uh, this open house gets controversial.
You are the target for the hoes this year.
No, I, I would say though, I'm, I'm glad you're planning on it, still moving forward, is doing it, and hopefully you can get a plan together and, and have it, because I enjoy it. My kids always enjoy getting over the fire, so it's nice to, nice to be able to have some, you know, on the first day of school, it's nice to get some normal things back in our lives and moving forward. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yep.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number two is Improvement twenty-dash-zero-three, and that is the twenty-twenty Large Patch Project Final Pay Estimate. Motion is to accept uh staff's recommendation, approve the attached invoice along with the additional last invoice for the Wild Avenue Patch in a total amount of fifty thousand dollars. That's forty-four, five, fifty-seven, and five, four, fourth, five thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars respectively, and I so move.
Second.
Motion. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries.
Item number three is the request to construct a police impound lot. Uh, the motion is to accept staff's recommendation, proceed with the plan of providing a separate police department impound lot on the industrial park parcel denoted PID four-one zero-one zero-five four-nine, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Bevins, a second by Pritchett. Is there any discussion? Kelly.
Just uh, Mr. Chair, well, how this is financed is part of the street department, uh Parks Department addition to the streets department facility. This will become part of that project.
So this sixteen thousand is part of that project cost?
Yep, that's right. Sixteen thousand, and I'm trying to read it. It's little print, sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, plus there will be some staff time. And that's for the feds.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And our last item is item number four, the garbage haulers and canisters discussion items. As you recall, Alderman Pritchett brought up an issue of canisters being left on the streets and alleyways uh long after pickup. Um, the motion of this very lengthy discussion, a- as a matter of fact, it's been going on for nearly twenty years since I've been on the council, is to um, uh work with staff and the garbage haulers, first of all, to uh encourage enforcement through notification using the PU, uh, bu- the public utilities, uh billing statements, as well as the um, uh, the billings of the, of the, um, of the haulers themselves. And the second portion of that is to enact a waste haulers committee that would meet uh at least yearly for all the additional items and issues that go along with this. And I so move.
Lambert, second.
A motion by Bevins, a second by Lambert. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the only issue that, I mean, and I could spend literally the same number of time, length of time discussing everything that was brought forth, and a lot of it was, was excellent discussion. Um, but we did not appoint a representative from the council to this committee. We would expect staff and the haulers, but we should have a appointed, voted-on staff member. I, I don't know if Wayne or Jen, either one want to do this, or if not, I certainly would do it. I think it should, yep.
I could do it if, if it's okay with the rest of the council, unless Wayne would like to.
Okay, are we uh am- amending the motion then to add Jan?
The, the motion then would read, and the, and the council member would be Jan Lambert.
And Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I, I don't, I don't mean, uh, Kelly, I think we wanted to initiate this in thirty days. Is that correct?
Yeah, the first meeting won't be within thirty days, but that doesn't need to be part of the motion.
Any other discussion? I'll just note that Kelly's out here creating random committees for this here. You don't even know.
I mentioned that in, in committee, how much I loved.
But he does have a meeting date for it.
Yeah. But their tasks, their charges, uh, all the things that may come up.
Once they complete that, they'll, they'll be done.
Go sit at the children's table, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries.
End of report.
Thank you, Alderman Bevins. You did a lot better than uh three hours this time.
Mm-hmm. Barely.
Unfinished Business Eight-A Committee Resignations to Accept with Regret Yvette Campbell's resignation from the Economic Development Authority?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Bevins, a second by Pritchett, to accept with regret. Any discussion? I'll just uh remind, I, I mentioned this last meeting, but I'll remind everybody, she and her husband. she and her husband are moving to South Dakota. It's not that she isn't passionate about the economic development in our area, it's that she will be living in South Dakota.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, when I talked to her and she's by my business maker, I told her she was banished to South Dakota.
We have a different replay of it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. Now, we have some committee recommendations from Mayor Bedou.
Oh, all right, you've been waiting for it all night. There's no theme music tonight, but.
I did offer.
Yeah, I think we played that joke out. I have one recommendation of Michael O'Day to the Economic Development Authority. It's essentially a renewal as he was given one meeting.
And he's coming back for a second.
He enjoyed the one meeting, so we're, recommendation is to renew his appointment.
Looking for a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation?
Second.
Pritchett and Bevins, motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Item C, committee recommendations. I received an application from Keith Riddell to serve on our airport commission. Upon reviewing the application, it looks like he'd be a good asset for the airport commission, so I am recommending the council approve him.
So move.
Second. We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Wayne Erickson, because he was closer. I don't know if he was first.
My mic probably doesn't work.
Where's Stunek? Is he here?
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries, mayor, we have some call for applicants.
All right, call for applicants. Applications are available on the city hall website. You can find them there. We are looking for the following terms that expire twelve thirty-one of said year. The Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring twenty twenty-one and two terms expiring twenty twenty-two. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring twenty twenty. I also have the following that expires on the seventh, which was yesterday, of September of said year, and that is the Economic Development Authority, one term expiring twenty twenty-one, as described earlier, with our resignation.
Okay, and I actually don't because I just filled mine. You see how I do that, mayor? There was a vacancy.
You did that.
And then I filled it.
Interesting.
I didn't have to ask for any more applicants.
Well, if Kelly just calls me out again, I'll make sure that we get on all those committees that he yelled at me for.
Other applicants needed for our water tower committee coming down the home stretch, October twenty-fifth deadline, and the parking commission. Now, we're up to item number nine, new business. Nine A is new on-sale liquor, Sunday liquor and off-sale liquor license applications submitted by Northern Pacific Hospitality LLC, DBA notch eight, at fifteen fifty-one Northern Pacific Road in Brainerd. David, you're taking this?
Actually, that would be me.
Oh, okay.
So it is a new on-sale restaurant license, an off-sale and a Sunday liquor license. Per council, we wanted to put these on the agenda so we knew what we were approving for new licenses. And so the recommendation would be to approve this new, these three new liquor license contended upon the police and fire chief's approval. They're hoping to open up yet this fall.
Okay, I have one question. Are they opening a restaurant and a liquor store?
No, the off-sale would be that you could take a bottle of wine home with you or something like that. So it will be an on, it will be a restaurant.
Oh, and you can get off-sale licenses at restaurants? Jennifer?
And Mr. Chair, Nick Miller from Three Cheers is on the call, so he's on the Webex, and he wanted to be present in case the council had any questions of him.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just follow up on what you just asked. I'd like to ask Nick how that works that you take home a bottle of wine. Nick, how does that work for you? Take home a bottle of wine?
Taking home a bottle of wine? I mean, currently, under the regulations on the state level, you can take home a bottle of wine or a six-pack of beer. Hoping to have that similar to what Baxter approved for Erie Bay in that if you were enjoying a night out and you wanted to grab a bottle of wine to take home, you could, or if you wanted to do like a drink kit, that's one of the things we're working on, little drink kits, which is not covered under the governor's order, which would need an off-sale license. So those kind of things.
Sounds very innovative. Any other questions?
Move to approve if we're ready.
We got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second from Bevins, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Abstain.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to nine B, proposed ordinance fifteen ten, amending the rural service district, public hearing and first reading. Chansky.
Thank you, Mr. President. On August seventeenth, the council received a request from Mr. Greg Jalinski of ninety eighty-nine Diamond Drive to add his property that his home sits on, to add it to the rural service district. It currently is not in the rural service district, but the property that is connected to his, that actually serves as his driveway is. At that time, the council directed staff to proceed with the process for adding Mr. Jalinski's property to the rural service district. This is what ordinance number fifteen ten does. Again, per the process, we would hold the public hearing tonight and then hold the first reading.
So I gotta hold a public hearing first? So I'm gonna open up a public hearing at eight twenty-six on proposed ordinance fifteen ten, amending the rural service district. Is there anybody here to speak on that? Yeah, unmute everybody. If you're here to talk about the rural service district, please state your name and address. Hearing nobody, we can mute them back up. I will close the public. Pay no attention to the rural service district.
Behind the curtain.
So we'll close the public hearing at eight twenty-seven, and we'll go with the city administrator, Bergen Rickman, to dispense with the actual reading, but holding the first reading.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that.
Mr. Chair, we can clarify with that, if you dispense, dispensing with the whole reading, as long as it's unanimous vote, then you actually don't have to hold.
Oh, yeah, you don't hold it, you just dispense. Motion to dispense.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second to dispense with the actual reading. All in favor? Well, let's vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yeah, 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 yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. President, committee's fault. One other thing, the council also directed staff to bring the issue of the rural service district back to the planning commission to discuss the future of it. And planning commission, it's gonna be on their agenda to discuss next, during their meeting next week on the sixteenth.
Good, thank you. That brings us to nine C, Public Works Department discussion item. Is this city administrator Bergman? Is this Parks Board, is this Paul?
Mr. Chair, members of the council, I think I can start us out. So as you know, Parks Director Tony Saylor is retiring, and he, his last day in the office will be on December eighteenth. So the park board has been looking at options and next steps. So one of the options that they discussed was creating a public works department or looking at exploring the creation of a public works department. At the August twenty-fifth park board meeting, the park board unanimously passed a motion asking staff to ask the city council if they would work with the park board to explore a potential public works department. The exploration would include the actual function, the staffing, the operations and et cetera that would need to be discussed collectively between the city council and the park board to see if there's any interest between the council and the park board in moving this forward. So the recommendation from staff is to move forward with the exploration of this and then work with the park board, and then also to ask for two council members to be appointed or considering to work with the park board on this so we can have a discussion between both. Kevin Jaeger and Kara Schaefer are both here, as is Parks Director Saylor, if you have any questions of us or of them.
Okay, so this isn't creating a position, this is creating a committee to consider, considering a position.
That is correct. It's an exploration of what a public works department could look like. And I think it's just solely that, let's take a look at it, and I think that's what the park board was intending also.
Yeah, so I favor that anytime you have a, have a opportunity to improve based on retirements or whatnot, it's always worth taking a look at to see if it could possibly be an improvement or not. I think I favor looking into it, and I would be willing to sit on that committee, but I don't know what anybody else on the council thinks.
Mr. Chair, this is Lambert. I am sorry, I do agree with you, I think it's, we should be at least explored. And very bad problem for a beneficial for the city. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting a crime here, I'm sorry. So, but I do agree with you. To go ahead.
Thank you, any other thoughts or motions or volunteers to sit on said committee?
I think it's a good idea to look into, so good opportunity.
I would, I would like to sit on that committee with you.
Okay. So a motion to.
Move forward, work with the park board and appoint two council members to work with the park board on this.
Second.
Motion by Pritchett, second by Bevins to appoint Wayne Erickson and myself to be the two council members and work with the park board to move forward and explore this opportunity. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Aye.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. Ten, Planning Commission variance request, five fifteen, South Ninth Street setbacks for duplex development. David.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric Stangler submitted a request on behalf of his business, Stangler Properties LLC, for variance at five oh one five South Ninth Street. He's requesting, his initial request was for reduced side setbacks from five feet to three feet to fit a duplex he's looking to develop on that property. The property is considered legal non-conforming, that it's only about thirty-eight feet wide. And so it doesn't, now it doesn't meet the ordinance requirement for the width of a lot, nor does it meet the ordinance requirement for the square footage of the lot. Due to these reasons, he's asking, he was asking for narrower side setbacks to get this duplex on there. The property is zoned R three, high-density residential, so that fits. During that discussion, the planning commission considered this request on August nineteenth during the regular meeting. The commission did vote unanimously to approve the requested variance with the condition that the north line setback shall be no less than three feet, but all other setbacks should be met as required by the ordinance. They felt that when they looked at his site plan, if they just shifted it, that three feet on the north side, he could still meet all of the other setback requirements. There was a little confusion on his behalf of whether a sidewalk could be in the setback or not. So essentially, just giving him the one side and then also as well recommending that the applicant consider the placement of the proposed garage further from the north lot line due to proximity to neighboring garage. He's proposing it only be about five feet from that line. That's within the ordinance, so obviously the commission couldn't make that a requirement, that it be moved. They just wanted to end, end their actual recommendation that they are recommending that it be shifted to the south to be further apart from the neighboring garage. Due to a technical issue that we did have with our software, the notification for the public hearing didn't end up going out. We presented it to the planning commission due to the time of year and hoping that Mr. Stangler can get his project going. They are requesting that the, that the city council hold the public hearing prior to making their decision, and it was notified that the, notified as such.
We notified a public hearing tonight?
Yes.
Well, I'm fine with that, you guys wanna hold the public hearing right now? Okay, we'll open the public hearing for the proposed setback variance. Is there anybody here to speak on the variance? If you're here to speak on the setback variance, please state your name and address.
Mr. President, I did receive one call from Jean Horem. She resides at four two eight Brom Street in Pequot Lakes, but owns the property at five oh eight South Ninth Street, just north of the proposed property here. She has, she does have, she wanted to share that she has general concerns on a duplex on a lot that's small. And that she just wanted to share that, you know, when she had bought her property on that street to make more room, she actually ended up buying the lot next door. So her, she just had general concerns on duplex on.
But based on zoning, if they just shrunk the size of their duplex by three feet, they could technically.
They could, and that was something that the planning commission did discuss with the applicant, again, based off of the size and what he was trying to get it, get. He felt like if he shrunk it by that, that three feet, it wouldn't necessarily work with what he's trying to do, and it'd actually become more costly because then the build would be more custom and such.
Mm-hmm. So is there, is there a reason to be concerned, in your opinion, your professional opinion on that non-conforming lot size, having a duplex on it? No?
No, not in this case.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing at eight thirty-six. And then I guess the motion is to approve or deny the variance.
I'll make that motion to approve it.
I'll second it, Lambert.
We have a motion by Wayne Erickson, second by Lambert, to affirm the planning and zoning commission's variance. Any discussion?
Chair, I got a question for David. For variance, you need to have the practical difficulty. Is that just the size of it? What's the threshold for that?
In this case, it would be the fact that, so the practical difficulty is, is the size because it's so narrow and just kind of general building on how it would fit on there. Makes it very hard to build any kind of structure on there to do the width and the required setbacks. And that also falls into the other requirement of being something that is outside the property owners. So it wasn't something that they did, it was that the lot at some point either got split or platted that, that probably was split and made that small. And in a current ordinance is, we would not even allow that lot to be split to that size.
And you did say it's currently an R three?
Correct, it is in the correct zoning district.
Thanks.
Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson. W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item number 11, Public Forum. Let's unmute the callers one final time. See if anybody is here to speak at the Public Forum. If you're here to speak at the Public Forum, please state your name and address.
I'd like to speak if I could. My name is Jeff Chesok, 511 East Street.
Jeff Chesok, you're recognized.
Thank you. I have a couple of quick things. The, the committees need, still need filling, especially Charter Commission. I had a nice conversation with Administrator Jennifer this afternoon, and I want you to think about, if anybody was somehow influential in getting people to apply, thank you very much. I don't know if that was organic, or if there was some people encouraging others, but thank you. We need more people, because one absentee, we can't conduct the meeting. And if there's an election outcome this year that will make us three, the election turns out a certain way, which I, I'm not suggesting it should or shouldn't be a certain way, just to make you aware of that. I think you all know what I'm referring to, I hope, and I, I did wanna talk about the Charter Commission very briefly, that, and, and this is nothing disparaging on you, Mr. Bevins, but we have always tried to accommodate you, and we're happy to do so with your schedule, but I'm so grateful to see that you can make a meeting earlier than 5 o'clock as you did tonight, at the safety of the works. Yeah, so.
Jabs go.
Jennifer, keep that in mind when we schedule our Charter Commission meeting, maybe we can get them to come earlier, okay? And the street over here at D and 5th, and the whole northeast, I think it's well done. And I, I wanted to say one thing about Chief McQuiston. Over the years, he has been extremely responsive, very gracious, and I can't think of a more polite individual. I, I think the city's gonna really miss him, and that's the luck of him. And one brief note of, I wanna thank Mr. Pritchett for asking the important question about maintenance on the last tag. We did not get a definitive answer on that, it was just a very subjective response was affordable. Please look into that, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else here for Public Forum? Anybody else here for Public Forum? Anybody here for Public Forum? Hearing none, we will close the Public Forum at 8:40. Move on to staff reports. Any verbal updates since the pack? It'll start with Jennifer?
Yep, I have a couple. First of all, just to bring to your attention that it, on Wednesday, September 16th, is Employee Appreciation Day. Lunch will be provided by the Wellness Committee for employees at their departments, where we would encourage council members to attend. And also awards will be given to employees at that time also. The American Legion is going to be providing a box lunch, your choice of either a burger or pasta. So if you could please circle back with Stephanie and let her know whether or not you are able to attend from 11:30 to 12:30 on Wednesday, September 16th. And then a couple of other things. The mayor and I met with the Evergreen Cemetery Board. It was a very interesting meeting, and also got a great tour of the cemetery, and I sure learned a lot. It was very interesting. The cemetery board would like to speak to the council, and I believe they will be presenting to you on September 21st. Also, I had the opportunity with Furt Faust to take the history walk downtown Brainerd. If you haven't done that, I would strongly encourage you. It was my first time. I'm sad to say that it was my first time doing that. I can't wait to do it again, and what I understand that people who have done that have learned something new every time that they have gone on his tours. As Mr. Chesok mentioned, we do have a Charter Commission. Last week, we finally heard back from the district judge, who did officially appoint our Charter Commission to charter, new Charter Commission members, Kevin Jaeger and Mike O'Day. So tomorrow, we will be sending out a doodle poll to those Charter Commission members, trying to schedule a meeting for either next week or the week after, to start our Charter Commission. It will be really important that all four, and also our liaison, attend, as that's what it will require for a quorum. And then, last but not least, we are attempting this hybrid WebEx and in-person meeting. Our recommendation is to open up our council meetings on September 21st. The county board did open theirs, so I guess with that, Mr. Chair, I would, I would just ask for, you know, kind of head nods agreements, to go ahead and open up our council meetings on the 21st.
Does anybody disagree? No? Sounds good.
And that concludes my, my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. David, you had something?
Mr. President, just have two things. The Walkable Bikeable Committee is, does continue to meet. They're looking at getting some new blood into the committee as well, so if there's anyone interested in looking at how we can make our community more pedestrian-friendly. The Walkable Bikeable Committee, they meet on the 4th Monday of the month at 5:00 PM, if anyone is interested in finding out more of what they do. And then the second thing is the Planning Commission is having a special meeting tomorrow night, that's Wednesday, September 9th, starting at 6:00 PM. The purpose of this meeting is to interview seven, six consultants who have submitted RFP responses to do the zoning code update. We'll be meeting here in the council chambers. Those interviews be held in person, but we also will be live streaming that meeting as well.
Six firms?
Six firms.
Forty-five minutes a pop or so?
Uh, they're giving about 15 minutes to present, 10 minutes for questions, but we're roughly doing about 30 minutes each.
Chair.
Yeah, David, what time?
Starts at 6:00 PM.
I know you said.
Yeah, and then the intention will be that likely the Planning Commission will then probably save, I'm anticipating after those interviews, they'll save deliberation for the regular meeting on the 16th. The intention is to bring a recommendation before the, the city council on the 21st.
So, moving on that. That's, that's all you have to add? Paul, you have anything? Corky, Tony, Chris? Well, after staff reports comes the mayor's report. Can we get the agenda changed? Can we get the agenda changed? Will you put the mayor's report after staff reports for me?
Yeah, well, thank you for letting me speak, and not forgetting me, again, as always. I wore, I wore my brightest shirt. That's a lie, this is not my brightest shirt.
You've got a nice background, obviously there's council people you can't see.
Beautiful, you keep looking at me, and I have no idea what's happening. I forget there's a giant TV behind me. I just wanna reiterate what Jennifer said about the Evergreen Cemetery. That was a fantastic chance for us to, to sit down and listen to their conversation, and that's something that's gonna come before the council. They have an ask from the council. And I, I think it's a, it's a worthy part of our, our city and our history, which falls right into the second part that Jennifer stole from me as well, was I also got to take the walking tour with Furt. And Furt is slowly trying to get me to absorb his knowledge so that I can help him out with those. I'm dragging my feet, because I'm not old enough to be a history buff yet, so. But I wanna say thanks to Furt for all that he does with that, and also the Evergreen Group as well. It's a, such a beautiful cemetery, and I knew that my grandfather was buried there. I did not know the extent of the Bedau plot, and so it was very nice to get in there and see that again, and see how many of my ancestors are buried there, so. End of the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mayor Bedau. It was a beautiful report. Let's go to council member reports. Wayne?
Nothing.
Hey, I have, so I have two things that both just came up, and I wanna complain that the mayor stole my thunder after the, after the city administrator stole his thunder, because I went on a history walk with Furt Faust this last week. And it was excellent. I learned a lot. And also, I just wanna, you know, say thanks again to Corky for giving us a few months to find a replacement for you, and that, working with you over the last few years that I've been on the council, you're very responsive and always put in the research and the time, and are just so helpful on everything with, with your department, and just utmost professional. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also would like to thank Chief McQuestion for his decades of service. He's certainly been a great asset to the city of Brainerd. I'd like to make a suggestion that we put that water tower, if we're really coming to the deadline of October, that that should be on sooner rather than later, as early as next council meeting, to get an update from the Water Tower Committee, because we've made a commitment, financial to the committee and to the city of Brainerd. And then I absolutely agree with Mr. Chesok. I see no reason why we can't meet at 5:00 in the morning for the, for the, way ahead of that 5:00 PM. I don't see a reason why anybody else would be busy at 5:00 AM. End of report.
I'd just like to say that for the first time in almost six months, I was in the classroom with a bunch of kids looking at me. I can't say I was staring at their bright, shiny, smiley faces, because I couldn't see most of their faces due to the masks, but, you know, protocols were in place. It's good to be back in front of live kids, and we'll see how it goes from there. I'm kinda disappointed. I had a playlist for the mayor's reports. I was going to play Toolmaster, "A Brainerd Bike Trip Shakespeare" today, you know, theme things for the whole time, but that's all right. I'll get over.
Time, we can take our time with this. We gotta let the joke die down a little bit, then bring it back.
All right, so just let me know when you want me to start doing the introductory music again.
The Rule of Threes, that's what it's called.
But that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, two items. Committee updates, the Northland Board of Directors, Northland Iberia Board of Directors met August 27th, and most of the discussion revolved around just trying to increase revenue for the year, kinda ramping up member recruitment. And then the other committee was the Riverfront Committee. We met September 2nd. It was kind of a tailgating. Mr. Saylor and I did some tailgating. We thought the barbecue was a bring-your-own-chair event. Hey, embarrassed to say, we forgot our chairs, but there was a tailgate we flopped down, so. But big news there is the 2.85 million, million-dollar bonding request got recommendation, LCCMR recommendation, and so that's a big step in their bonding recommendation, funding that project. And so they're in the process of revising the work plan. The budget got a little bit of a trim. As I understand, all projects under $250,000 were approved, or recommended for approval, I should say, and then anything over that threshold had to take a little bit of a haircut.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent budget cut. So there, the committee's now revising the work plan to reflect that cut, this week, I understand, and the committee does plan to come before council at a later date, but I believe on the 22nd, they'll be presenting to the Parks Board. And, and also like to thank Corky for his, your decades of service, and I wish him well. So thank you.
And just, when you meet with the Parks Board, with the Riverfront Committee, make sure that the Parks Board is considering their long-term capital planning, because if we end up getting this 2.8 million dollars next year, that's gonna fall on the Park Board's plate for a 2022 project, probably. So they should probably have that accounted for somewhere.
Yeah, thank you, and that did come up, that very topic, that at some point, this committee will be handing that off to the Parks Board. It'll become a Parks Board project.
Perfect. You're done?
I'm done, thanks.
I have two things, just echo to Corky, a big thank you. And then I'm the council rep on the airport commissioner, on the airport commission. We had an annual report given by Steve Wright today. There's some exciting times coming up at the airport with the money that we were awarded, so that's gonna be fun. Thanks again.
Alderman, Jan, Lambert, you get the final word.
Thank you, guys, for letting me hone in on this. First off, I just want to, Kelly, this is for you, Kelly. We are going to be resuming our rental maintenance committee starting in October. It'll be the first Monday and third, no, first Wednesday, first and third Wednesday of the month.
At 6:00 in the morning.
And then I'm grandma again, so I have two granddaughters, beautiful granddaughters, total of eight. So, thank you for.
Thank you, Jan. Ready for a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Second to the Monday meeting of the Fire Department.
Adjourn to the Fire Department next Monday at 6:00 for the council workshop, and we'll vote by roll call.
Stunick.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. We're adjourned.
Nice to see everyone back again.